The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Welcome everyone to the Town Council meeting. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our hands and which is supreme in God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Thank you. Roll call.
I'm Ms. Joan Stetson.
Here.
I'm Ms. Jean Noney.
Here.
Mayorkasinski.
Here.
I'm Ms. Aladi.
Here.
I'm Ms. Pagliano.
Here.
I'm Ms. Peanessa.
Here.
I'm Ms. Russell. I know you have a form.
Thank you very much, Kate. All right, so we'll go on. We have a proclamation. I'll read the proclamation and then I'll present it. So proclamation. "Town of Berlin includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences. The Town of Berlin is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, families, and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. The Town of Berlin recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, emotional well-being for the benefit of all. The Town of Berlin can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark H. Kozinski, do hereby proclaim May 2019 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to take the time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community dated this 7th of May 2019." So with that... Barbara. Barbara. Have the proclamation. How are ya? How are ya? So here's our proclamation. Want to present that to you as the head of our show on the aging and senior center. So here we go. We hope we will do to honor our seniors and help them out the best we can.
You will.
I know you do. You do with the seniors. You do a lot of great work there. So thank you guys. Thanks a lot.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
In terms of the proclamation, I was wondering if maybe Tina could just answer a couple of questions about senior, if you wish.
Sure.
So do you want to come up to the podium? Thanks, Tina. First, my congratulations on the proclamation. You do such a wonderful job. I'm just wondering if you would share with us some of the events and things you have planned for the month of May to highlight Older Americans Month.
Okay. So this being Older America's Month, we have some additional more programs than we usually do. We have our Commission for Aging Spring Social. That is on Thursday, May 23rd, from 3:30 to 5:30. We start the afternoon off with musical entertainment. We have airborne jazz, which is a three-piece ensemble. We've had them before. They encourage the seniors get up and dance. So they play for about an hour. And then we have dinner. And I get a community partner of ours to sponsor the dinner, so that it's no cost to the town.
Oh, wow.
So we have a lovely dinner after the entertainment. We also have, we have this month on May 22nd, which is a Wednesday, at 1 o'clock, we have a gentleman, Alan Davario, who is, was, a White House butler.
Oh, wow.
So he is coming up from Maryland. What I did was I worked with other senior centers in the state to, to all of us book him at different times so that he would come up and, because we had to make it worth his while to come up. He actually worked with the butler that the movie The Butler was made about.
Ah.
So he will talk about that. He also will bring some memorabilia items and talk about his time in the White House and the presidents that he served. We have a craft class being sponsored by one or another Berlin business, Euro American Connections. We also have naturopath health program. We have a writing workshop to write their memoirs from another young lady who grew up in Berlin, graduated with me, who is now college professor and has written a few books. And her mother attends the senior center. So we are, she has agreed to, for free, do a memory writing class with the seniors.
Wow.
We also have our regular programs. You know, we have bingo every Thursday. We have a new game that they are enjoying is poquino. And they made a bet with Jack.
Twenty-second.
That he has to come. They shook on it, so he has to show up to play poquino with them.
Oh, cool.
And we're having, on Thursday, we're having a carving station for lunch. Instead of our regular lunch, we have a carving station, which will be turkey, mashed potatoes, stuffing, cranberry sauce, like a Thanksgiving dinner. We approximately have about 40 people signed up for it so far. And that's about, you know, those are the specials that we're having this month.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
And congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you, Tina, because I know that you do such an amazing job up there with minimal staff and volunteers and, and I think you're tremendous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks again, Tina. Barbara. Okay, so we are on our Audience of Citizens next. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes?
Rachel Rochette, 61 Ellsworth Boulevard. Couple of things I wanted to mention. Congratulations to Tina. One is the result of the budget referendum that was held recently. I do see that it is not on the agenda for discussion, so a little curious around that, about that.
Yes.
Okay, good. And also I know that there is a special meeting that the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed has arranged for parents and interested citizens in town on Thursday at 1:00 at BHS. I hope to see some of the council there as well. As I know, with the, with the new charter revisions, last year you were, you kind of made that decision. So I hope you are all there to hear what people have to say. The second comment I wanted to make was around Mr. Healy's resignation. Thank you, Jack, for what you have done for the town. But as we look to move forward as a town with a new town manager, I hope that the Town Council does so in a transparent manner and adheres to the charter that you all asked for a revision on and does not ask legal counsel to go through legal yoga to define the difference between residency and domicile and that, in fact, someone does reside in town as the charter dictates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address the council?
Okay.
Seven, I think. I think it's seven. Because we can find out. Richard, seventh.
John O'Brien, Vineyard Drive. Okay, there's a dispute on the signs on the corner of Kensington and Norton Road to Elkes's. And it's getting around town, Mark, that you're blaming me for not being honest and upfront with the people on that sign. It's all bouncing back to you.
Hmm.
Nothing. The sign was put in front of our sign, nothing. The homeowner said it was okay. Well, I met with them today. Untrue. I wish the Republican Party would start telling the truth. Wait a minute, Mark, I'm not done.
All right, but just...
No, I'm not done, Mark.
I just want to add one thing to that before you go off on some crusade on the signs, okay? I spoke to Mr. Alkes. He told me the facts. He told me.
I was there today.
That's great. Well, I'll speak to him.
This is Audience of Citizens. Not supposed to be having a dialogue here.
Right, you know? Okay.
Let our citizens speak.
Okay, okay, Mark. We're going to go back to...
When they're the truth, I'll let them speak. But when are you going to make up...
No. Well, here's the truth, Mark. Newspaper.
Oh, that's, okay.
We're going to go back to October 6th, 7th, New Britain Herald. Quote from you. Basically saying that John O'Brien was delusional about the signs at the mobile gas station. And I'm going to back up a little bit. Those signs, because I did Joe Arisimowitz's signs, you didn't care for them. You could argue. We'll argue all day long about that. You gave the order to have those signs taken down. It was right here in the newspaper. That's when you came back out and says that I was delusional making that statement. Well, they have what they call a freedom of information. Your name came up and Ann Riley's name came up. The other thing, the night of your meeting on Farmington Avenue, David Seer pulled up and seen us putting those signs up. One person at that meeting says that Ann Riley went off the wall when she heard what those signs says. Steve Belinsky, basically, who has to go, Steve Belinsky has to go. Graciously radical bigot. Next thing, and Jack Healy's here, and everything, from what this person said, you got on the phone that night and called Jack Healy and Ann Riley wanted a special favor, those signs be removed. This is from a Republican that was at that meeting, told us. Now, am I delusional? I don't think so, Mark. Not when it was coming from one of your people. The other thing you have on there is that at no time, at your words, will there be any signs on state-owned property. I mean, we paid our town surveyors to go out and survey, on taxpayers' money, to survey state-owned property across from Central Pizza. You said that one sign will go up on the mobile. If it's a tag sale sign, any sign, will not be allowed there. I've been sitting back, Mark. I see signs on town-owned property, see signs down at the mobile, and I see signs on the rail that because it wasn't a Republican sign, you had them removed, and everything. So who's delusional now? Right here, I got the facts. So don't call me a liar, Mark. It's about time you started telling the truth, because we got your statements in the newspapers, nothing. So now, how about the signs on those properties? How about the signs on Elkes's? And everything, I was there today. And they said just the opposite, you've been spreading around town, and everything. Mr. Elkes didn't say, "Put that sign right in front of the Board of Education sign," and everything. They know I don't lie. My son's personal friends, they went to school all the way through. They have kids, they go to each other's birthday parties. I see Freddie Junior all the time. So we're personal friends. They trust me. They know I don't lie, Mark. I think somebody else is lying. Thank you. And don't call me delusional, and that's the way you treat our senior citizens in this town. Shame on you.
Thank you for quoting a newspaper article that we don't know if it's correct or not, but I, you know, that's fine.
It's your statement, Mark. It's your statement. They took it.
That's okay. All right. Anybody else? Yes, Barbara.
Barbara Gombach, 24 Sterling Drive, Kensington. I came here the last time we had a council meeting, and Joe Bajorzki gave a report on the senior housing. Well, it was difficult for me to hear the report, but I didn't get a lot out of that report. So because so many of the council members are new, if I could, I want to go through a very brief timeline on senior housing. In 2012, we met with Senator Edith Prege. She came to the senior center and I spoke to her about senior housing. She was, she was the senior commissioner for the state at that time. So she was very interested, and I told her we had a lack of adequate senior housing. The next day, or it's about two days later, I got a call from her assistant. And her assistant wanted to know more about our lack of senior housing. So I referred the assistant to the housing authority, Joe Bajorzki. Well, the next day I got a call from him saying that I should never speak to anyone from Hartford about anything the housing authority, because I could just make a mess and I should refer them, and I did, and I could create a problem for the project. So I was on a gag order. So I couldn't say anymore about that. But that was in 2012. So 2015, we had a presentation from the architect about the new housing on Percival Avenue. And they were, they were very good. That was already now, we're already a couple of years into that. 2016, I had a call to Joe Bajorzki on the housing update, and there was no answer. But his secretary told me, "Housing, the list was closed. We were not taking new applications because we didn't have adequate senior housing." So now in 2017, another year later, Mr. Bajorzki, when I called him again, I was calling him like every other month for my commission. In 2017, he said they were waiting for a ground lease from the state for four acres, and it was in the hands of the housing authority attorney. He would call me when he found out. Now, in June of 2017, the lease was still to be reviewed, and that was since May. Now, I don't know, that seems to take an awful long time to me. And I would check with our commission every month. Now, November 16th, they said the town must act on the leasing agreement for Percival Housing. I don't know what that means. But it seems to me that from 2012 to 2018, that's a long time. And now we're in 2019, and we still don't have a shovel in the ground. And Jack told me they were going to try to clear one of the buildings so that that property would be all ready for development. And I did take it upon myself to call the authority, the housing person in Southington. And as we were talking, there were people moving into their new senior facility, one of many that they have there, two years, start to finish. So it just seems to me that we have to do more for our seniors. Because when we had a meeting at the senior center, the superintendent said, "If we had more, more seniors were able to transition into senior housing, we would have more housing for young people to come in with young families." And he said a study had been done on that.
That's true.
So I just wanted to bring you up to date, because I know many of you are new, and I've been at this a long time. So I just, I will be at the next meeting, and I was glad that you said he had to come back in June, because we can't let the whole summer go by.
I agree. Thank you.
You know? So thank you very much for letting me do that.
Thank you, Barbara. That was very informative.
Hi, I'm Kristin Campanelli, 56 Hummingbird Drive. I am here with Joanne Angelico Stetson and Karen Pagliaro, our Democratic Town Council members, and a citation from the Connecticut General Assembly from our awesome state reps, Joe Arisimowitz and Kathy Abercrombie. They wanted to recognize National Nurses Week. So I'm going to read this. This is from Connecticut General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative Joe Arisimowitz, 30th District, Speaker of the House, and Representative Kathy Abercrombie of the 83rd District. "Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut House of Representatives hereby offers its sincerest congratulations on National Nurses Week, in recognition of a week established by the American Nurses Association to raise awareness of all nurse contributions and commitments and acknowledge the vital role nurses play in society. We at the Connecticut General Assembly would like to extend a special thanks to our nurses as they continue to provide the highest level of quality care to their patients. You deserve special recognition today and every day for your vast contributions and the positive impact you make on a daily basis. Membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses a hope for continued success given on the 6th day of May 2019 at the state capitol, Hartford, Connecticut." And that's because Berlin has many nurses that we employ, and we just wanted to say thank you to all of those people, and Joe and Kathy.
Great.
And our thanks to them as well. I'm going to give this to you ladies and let you guys be the keeper. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm going to try not to cry, but I really appreciate what Representative Arisimowitz did. We have fabulous nurses in town, and I didn't want them to go unrecognized. So Jack, would you please share this with Wendy and her staff and tell them how much we thank them for everything they do every single day, please?
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you to the nurses in this room and everywhere else. I can tell you that it's an honor to sit alongside this woman on the council, but she is also a guru in her field and is being acknowledged with the Florence Nightingale Award, which, and it's just incredibly well-deserved. She is the kind of woman and nurse who, when I call her for whatever, anything personal, she will meet with, with people if I ask her to on her own time, and she's just incredibly generous of spirit and of her time, and I'm honored to know you. And Fred Morley is a nurse as well. I was talking to him up on the way up in the elevator, and he wants his specialty to be with geriatric nursing, which I think is a really, a really noble thing. So I just want to thank you all.
Damn, darn it. Anyone else wish to speak? The Audience of Citizens?
Mark, I'd like to just say a couple of things, or one thing, actually. I'd like to acknowledge Joanne Stetson, 188 Stony Mill, East Village. I just wanted to acknowledge Governor Ned Lamont and the Connecticut State Department of Education Commissioner Diana Wensel. Today announced that 41 schools, high schools in Connecticut have won the 2019 College Success Award by Great Schools, which is a national nonprofit organization that provides information on educational opportunities to parents. The award recognizes 1,722 schools across 25 states, and Berlin High School is one of them. So...
Fantastic.
Really exciting.
That's great.
The CEO of Great Schools said, "These Connecticut schools are providing their students with high-quality public education that equips and empowers them with skills to forge a path to bright futures. The system includes two indicators that measure students' preparation. One indicator evaluates whether students in grades 11 and 12 have participated in coursework during high school that prepares them for success in college and/or careers. And the other indicator evaluates whether students in grades 11 and 12 have attained benchmark scores on at least one of the most prevalent college career readiness exams." So I'm just really proud of our students, of our staff, of our administrators in this town, and that is a wonderful example of why we need to fund our schools.
Great. Okay, anyone else? I think none. Close the Audience of Citizens. I do want to say that the Audience of Citizens should be for great news and people to speak, but it really shouldn't be for name-calling and accusatory statements that are obviously untrue to myself personally. I, that's, you know, that's just shocking to me that, quite frankly, haven't been called dishonest first time in my lifetime. 30 years in law enforcement, federal judges, U.S. attorneys, deputy attorney generals, DEA chief counsel, DEA administrator. That's, that's new to me. So, you know, if you don't want to deal with the facts, then don't. But don't come up here and accuse a council member, myself, or anyone else in the room. That's not what the Audience of Citizens is for, so...
Well, I think the Audience of Citizens can sometimes be difficult, because perhaps there's some people that don't want to hear what they're hearing. However, it's not designed to be censored.
Well, that's true, but it's not designed for libel and slander either, Joanne.
So, well, you know...
That's a whole different argument, but, so anyway, okay, move on. Thank you very much. Onto our, onto our meeting agenda. We have the consent agenda next. We all read the consent agenda. We received them in our packets, packets ahead of time. Lot of things on the consent, a lot of items on the consent agenda. Do we have anything, any questions on any of them before we take a motion?
We're good.
We're good? Take a motion on our consent?
They'll make a motion to accept the 19 items on the consent agenda in front of us tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I mean, none? All is in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, so move. Agenda item one.
Agenda item number one is to discuss the, and adopt a resolution for the CROG's Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan update. I believe this is done every five years. Matt Adishu from the Emergency Management Department is here to discuss it, along with David Murphy from Malone McBroom, who was instrumental in putting this together for the CROG. So I believe David said he was here five years ago to give the presentation also. So Matt and Dave?
No, that's fine. I wasn't sure just how far, how much information you guys would need, so I appreciate that, Dave, because you've got more than I would have. I'm going to give you guys basically the Peter's Digest version, and then any other questions that I can't answer, Dave can probably jump in. This plan, as Jack said, is every five years. This is a resolution to adopt the 19 through 24 years for, for this mitigation plan. Without this plan, the town will be out of some of the grants that FEMA offers and the federal government. We have to have this plan in place. The plan does not cover disaster response or recovery. It covers basically planning and prevention and, you know, things that we can do as a town to mitigate any storms or any flooding. It handles flooding. It handles earthquakes. It handles, it will take on wildfires, but a normal fire, no. Terrorism, no. It's geared towards natural disasters. And it affects departments such as planning, zoning, public works, the emergency management. We all have tasks that are part of this plan. It could involve something as easy as cleaning out a culver or re-engineering a floodway, something like that. But again, it's a plan that is, correct me, David, it's pretty much boilerplate, and then they kind of, they feed it into specifics for the town. It's almost like our town emergency plan. And basically, all this agenda item is for the, is the adoption, or the resolution to adopt CROG's plan as it is written, so that we can move forward with any grants or anything that we want to move forward with. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or...
Any questions? No? Did a great job, Matt.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything you want to add, or...
No, I would just add, this is the first time that the town is part, is truly part of CROG's plan. The last two times, the town is part of the former Central Connecticut Regional Planning Agency, which was an RPO that was dissolved. So this is, this is your third time being part of a plan, the first time being part of CROG's plan.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks a lot. So what do we have in this? We have a resolution, I guess?
Yep. I think you have to read that.
No, we can just move this resolution, right? Or should we read it all? Should we read it all to the record?
You can just move the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Okay. "I move to authorize a resolution that the Berlin Town Council may adopt the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan updated 2019 through 2024. As the official plan of the Town of Berlin, respective officials identified in the mitigation strategy of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommended actions assigned to them. Future revisions and plan maintenance required by 44 CFR 201..." Future revisions and plan maintenance required by 44 CFR 201.6 and FEMA are hereby adopted as part of this resolution for a period of five years from the date of this resolution. An annual report of the progress of the implementation elements of the plan shall be presented to the Town Council, and further resolve that Jack Healy, as the Town Manager of Berlin, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Berlin, on behalf of the Berlin Town Council, to do and perform all acts and things he/she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. All right.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Agenda item number two, I believe you were handed an amended version of it. What this is for is authorizing the funding for materials of a bridge to be constructed in Bicentennial Park. Jim Mahoney's been instrumental in working on this. You had approved a project for, an Eagle Scout project for Brent, Catton?
Catton.
I don't believe he's here. And he needs, the funding was, the project, he needed $800 as part of the funding. Jim explained that the, that the town had been given money, donated money, for bridges in, on the trails, and felt that this was an appropriate use of the money. We went back and forth, we talked to the Land Use Department, and we finally came to the conclusion that the $800 for open space donations could be, could be used for the purpose of this bridge. Therefore, we're requesting that $800 from the open space donations account be given to the Berlin Land Trust to reimburse the land trust, because they've given him the $800 for the materials, because there's certain timeframes that they have to, have to finish this project by. And we felt it was a good use. The, the bridge has been reviewed, the design, it was prepared for the young man, and he's been working with Mike O'Hearn. Mike has looked at the plans, Mike's a professional engineer. He felt that they're satisfactory. I think everything is in place, so we're requesting that you approve the payment.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, concerns? Any none? Take a motion?
Okay. Move to approve a payment of $800 from the open space donations account to the Berlin Land Trust, Inc., to reimburse the land trust for an $800 payment it made for the purchase of materials for an Eagle Scout project bridge at Bicentennial Park.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, agenda item number three. It's that time of year, we start to make a bunch of transfers. Kevin just loves this time of year. He's been putting them together, and he is here to go over transfer requests for $237,500.
So you, you all received a spreadsheet summary and then all the details. As Jack said, this is standard at this time of the year, probably be back a couple of more times. We're required to have all of our accounts zero or positive on the expenditure side by year-end. So to the extent we exceed the expenditure budget, we move money around, and that's what this transfer is. This is a net zero in the budget. We're moving from one account to another. The categories here are typical of what we would bring forward in May. As winter has ended, sometimes we go over on, you know, some of the accounts that are here, sometimes overtime is a little higher than expected. We have an account here for truck rentals, which is essentially the outsourced work that we do to plow the cul-de-sacs, and depending on the nature of the winter, it goes that way. The other big one that I'll point out on here is the police. We've experienced some employment gaps. We had a couple people who were out on long-term leave. They've had some fair amount of turnover, and as a result, because they're a 24/7/365 operation, personnel costs were down, but overtime was up, and so this is moving money between the two. I don't know if there's any questions on any of the particulars.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, I'll run it over. Take a, take a motion?
Sorry. Move to transfer $237,500 as detailed on the accompanying spreadsheet to cover higher-than-budgeted expenditures in identified accounts.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four.
Okay, agenda item number four is a, is a report from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the sale of 861, 889, 903, and 913 Farmington Avenue. I know, as you know, we've, we've been working very, or everyone's been working very hard on, on putting together a project down there, the transportation-oriented development project. Mark Kazakowski's been working very diligently on that, and he is here tonight, he's been part of the planning of this, and I think he's put together, they've put together a very good plan, and he is here tonight to report on Planning and Zoning's review of it, and also discuss the plan, if you have any questions.
Hi, I'm Mark Kazakowski, Town Planner. I just want to say that the Planning and Zoning Department and Economic Development have been working very hard in creating opportunities to grow our grant list and facilitate projects that will help us develop in a way that's in accordance with the plan of conservation development. So with that in mind, I was, I'm happy here to report to you that the Planning and Zoning Commission, last Thursday, May 2nd, approved a subdivision plan that will help accommodate the train station development, the TOD development at Kensington Village, for the plan that I've presented to you in the past, as well that the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed at a concept level. I can go over the plan, I guess generally speaking. The town currently owns three parcels of land, and the subdivision plan is designed to divide the, divide that area into four parcels and a new 68-foot right-of-way, which would be there to accommodate a new town road, which has been dubbed the Boulevard. And there's also a small triangular piece on the north side of the Boulevard that will also be retained by the town. The three other parcels that are on the plan, 889, 903, and 913 Farmington Avenue, would be sold to the developer that, if, when we move that far along. Also, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend, through the 824 municipal improvement process to, for the sale of those properties, as well as the property, 861 Farmington Avenue, which we've yet to acquire, but we would essentially flip the property to the developer. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mark? 861, that's the one that, right, we have, that's the one we're buying because of the...
Next week.
Right, next week, but for the, that was the pollution, right, that's due to the...
Mr. Bruno sent a butter to 889.
The butter, yeah.
Affected by off-site migration.
Right, okay. And that, that pollution came from a piece of property that what we bought and attacked, foreclosed on, and then took...
Took title, too.
And we've been stuck with the pollution ever since? How long ago was that? When do we, when did that, do we know when that foreclosure took place?
I don't know the exact...
Five years ago. 2012, 2013, something like that.
So because of that move by the town, we're kind of stuck with the pollution migrating, and hence the purchase of this, the sale of this property.
Well, there's the onsite pollution at 889, and then there's the migration to the abutting property.
Right, okay, right.
Dealing with the migration issue.
Right, for, onto 861? Yeah, okay.
There was a great article in the Hartford Business Journal about this project, which also was, was great to learn about the, about the developers. They've been involved in a myriad of successful projects, so I'm excited about this. Yeah.
I agree with you, Joanne. This is going to be, I think, amazing in town, and the renderings of the buildings and stuff. I mean, I already see that center area already busy with the addition of Busy Bean, too. There's a lot more people walking, and I think this will only add to it, so you guys are doing a great job. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great. And the other night, at Planning and Zoning, that was great, that Planning and Zoning approved that, language change for zone change on the Turnpike.
Berlin Turnpike Development Zone.
Right, which, which will allow for a couple developers that have plans to build mixed-use commercial and residential development. So that, that's fantastic that that happened, and that'll certainly move the grant list forward, as will, as will this development, as we get going. That's, that's great. Good, any other questions?
I don't think I need any action, other than...
We don't need, right, you don't need anything?
You accepting the report.
Thanks. We do, so thanks, Mark.
Thank you. You sure?
Agenda item number five is for the purchase of equipment from, for Timberland Golf Course. There's been money set aside to purchase some golf, from equipment for the course itself. John Zook is here to discuss the type of equipment that they're purchasing this year. In the past, they've looked at leasing this equipment, and this year, after we did some looking at the contracts, looking at the lease agreements, we felt that it was better that to stop the leasing of the equipment and to go so that you purchase, each year in a capital budget, you purchase a piece of equipment so that you're not carrying over the contract year to year. So, anyway, John's here to talk about the, the piece of equipment, the irrigation equipment they're buying for this year.
Okay, we're looking at purchasing. It's, it's actually a deep-tine airifier. It penetrates the surface of the greens about eight to 10 inches, opposed to conventional airifier, which is, penetrates the greens at about five inches. So this breaks up a hard-pan layer after a amount of time with going conventional airification. And we've actually rented a service to do this process in the past, and it costs approximately $5,500 to have someone come in and do this particular process. So by buying this, we pay for the, the piece of equipment in four years. And as Jack said, instead of leasing, tying the hands of the town for five years, we're just looking to purchase a piece of equipment upfront.
How long, generally, does something like that last?
For this piece of equipment, it would probably be, I would say, probably 15 years or so. Because it would only, it only really goes out once a, once a year in the, in the fall.
Got it. Thank you.
Questions?
Any maintenance associated with it? Making sure the tines are sharp, or...
Yeah, we, we would have to buy new tines for it. Tines are probably about $150 every time it would go out, but again, that would only be once a year, so.
Nominal, yeah.
Yeah, nominal fees.
Other questions for Mr. Zook? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the purchase of a Procore SR54 from Turf Products Corporation of Enfield, Connecticut, utilizing the Sourcewell, formerly the NJPA, contract number 129829, in an amount not to exceed $18,246.20.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Agenda item number six, Ray Graham is here again to talk about Belcher Brook Interceptor Relining Project. We're getting toward the end of the project, so we have been able to secure our loan from the state. Ray is here because he needs additional funds for certain activities that the consultant has done for us, so they're looking at funding, I believe it's Amendments Five and Six. Correct.
Hey, Ray.
Hi. Belcher Brook process is about 95% done. We're working on the manholes, and there's some additional remediation that's required for lawn maintenance and so forth. But what happened is in Amendment Five and Six, when it was previously approved by the Town Council, the engineer had put in, put in an amount that was too low for the permitting process. We found out that we had some issues with the Army Corps and deep applications and permits, and that was pretty well under, under terms of the amount that we had scheduled. We had $4,500, which came out to be over $13,000, and there's some additional costs in there, because we were required to have a soil scientist review every little parcel that we were working on, so that cost us additional funds. This is the, this is the last amendment for this, and it should cover the last invoice, and right now, we're scheduled for completion at the end of May for both the contractor and the engineer.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Ray? Hearing no questions? Take a motion?
Okay. Move to authorize the Town Manager to approve adding $30,750 to Amendment Five and Amendment Six of Contract 2008-24 for Cardinal Engineering to cover additional permitting and wetlands delineation costs for the Belcher Brook Interceptor Relining Project.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ray.
Agenda item number seven, Mike O'Hearn is here to talk about awarding bids for the reconstruction of town roadways. He'll be recommending to use the State Department of Administrative Services contracts for that work. So Mike is here to talk, talk about the plans.
Mike O'Hearn, Public Works Director. It's paving season, so the Department of Administrative Services bids came out, so what we'd like to do is use the DAS contracts 309 and 321 for both milling and for paving. We have about three roads ready right now for, for paving. We think we'll start probably in two or three weeks, so. And these are, this eight-bit contracts actually have negotiated unit costs for everything we're going to be doing, so it's actually a very handy way for us to proceed.
Great. Okay. Questions for...
Mike, do you know of any delays right now because of the wet weather we've had?
Um, well, they were going to pave, yes, but our guys have been prepping. They're down on Norton Lane, Anton and Cliffview, and they've actually been able to squeeze some time in during the early spring and actually part of last year, and they've done quite a bit of work down there. So it's actually almost ready to go right now, so we're just waiting for your approval, and then we're going to talk to probably Galasso Materials out of East Granby and get on their schedule. But if it gets, if it's going to continue to be wet, yes, there may be delays.
Okay, thank you. Great, thanks. Any other comments or questions?
I ask this question every year, does anybody look at changing the spec for the road base? Berlin has a lot of different types of soils. Some areas are great bank run road base, and some are visible clay.
Yeah.
And we seem to use the same spec. We pay, one of these companies come in, reclaim the road, regrade it, roll it, and pave over it, and then in 10 years, we're amazed when it falls apart again.
Yeah. Well, the new highway super, Steve Karp, is going to, we're going to do a heavier section, four inches of asphalt, and then they're going to reclaim and pulverize the entire pavement section with the base. If they need to bring more process, we're going to actually supply the process. But we haven't, no, we haven't done anything as far as the standard spec for the town.
Have you looked into using GeoTec styles in the...
We actually just did that behind Wildwood School on some asphalt trail.
You're promoting with that?
Because we had clay soil, and they could not get it to compact, which is what you're talking about, it was pumping. So we actually, that's kind of a test strip. We actually did the access trail off the parking lot and also the back trail of the sidewalk.
Knowing that they've been doing that for years, they have a similar problem, and it's...
So far, it looks like it tightened up nicely. So I, I actually would like to actually do another, like a test section on a roadway, just experiment with that and see if it actually holds up.
You know, it would be a little more costly upfront, but we might get a lot more light.
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, they had, I think, was $700 for what they did in the back there, a material cost, and really just rolling it out, so.
And you put that base over.
That's a possibility, so we'll, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Last year, Charlie, when they did the Kensington Road, we did run into that, but we did remove the clay and put a new base down. So if you remember, it took a little...
There was clay under it, I mean, it...
Yeah.
We took, yeah, but we took it out. We put, we put quite a, we put a...
We've got pits in the center of town to show you how deep it is.
So, but we did that last year for Kensington Road because of, because of the clay we found there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS services contracts, 18 PSX 0309 and 18 PSX 0321 for the 2019 construction season for the purpose of reconstructing and paving roadways.
Second on that. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Agenda item number eight is also from Mike. We were working on a project down at the, at the facility down there to modify and change the layout. As part of that, when the roads were changed down there, the property, the abandonment of the old roadway was never achieved. And so Mike's here to describe, but we're going through a process that we're going to abandon the old road and roadway and put it into the complex so that we can use that space as part of the modification.
All right. This may look familiar. I was... I was before this council before. You referred to P and Z for a Section eight twenty-four review. They came back with a favorable recommendation. So, and just in brief, the highlighted section here will become part of the transportation property, uh, actually the physical service complex property, um, formally. Right now, we are really using it. It's just now, it's, it's just, it's town to town. We are using what's technically considered right of way. So, the highlighted section will actually become part of the back tax lot and that property. So, what we're asking for is to schedule a public hearing. We will do notices to all of the surrounding property owners as well as posting signs on each end of this strip so that everyone's, um, notified thirty days in advance. If we do this on June eighteenth, we're gonna have the public hearing with a thirty days notice. It gives us enough time to get all this, um, out to the property owners. And at that point, after that, you can make the, uh, the final decision to accept it.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none? We'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to refer the matter of a partial abandonment of the Town Farm Lane and Mysterio Drive right of way. As shown on the plan, proposed abandonment Town Farm Lane and Mysterio Drive prepared by Malone and McBroom dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen to a public hearing on June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen at seven PM in accordance with Section thirteen A forty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number nine, again from Mike. Um, probably about a year ago, the council approved, or approved sending an eight dash twenty-four to, uh, the Planning and Zoning, Zoning Commission for a review for partial abandonment of Grove Hill, uh, to the, to the St. Paul's Church. Uh, we're at the point now where we come, it comes back to the, uh, to, to the town to, for, uh, the matter. We consider partial abandonment of that area. So, Mike is here to go over the details.
This is almost like what I just sort of described to you.
Thank you.
It's excess right of way and this is the, um, the orange, the high, orange highlighted areas are the actual existing property lines of St. Paul's, this parish's property. The highlighted area are excess rights of, uh, sort of rights of way that, that actually I think the, um, you, you approved this preliminary and then the P and Z had a favorable recommendation on the Section eight twenty-four review. So, now again, we're at the final stage of wanting to file it. So, we want the public hearing on June eighteenth to, um, analyze the rule of requirements of the, uh, property.
Okay.
Any... Question, Mike? Um, that right of way continues all the way to Farmington Avenue. So, the other property owners that are between St. Paul's and Farmington Ave, Avenue can also apply for something like this, right?
I guess they could. I guess the difference is that this was town property that...
I can't even find the money.
Oh, sorry. I guess the difference is that this was town property that was sold to the church.
Okay.
The old Kensington, I think it was the Kensington Grammar School?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, so, it might be a different situation, but anyone can apply, I guess.
Okay.
There's excess right of way and it's, it's deemed the town...
I guess, cause the, the history was there was gonna be a boulevard created there. So, the town owned all that land. Okay.
Yeah, that was right there. It was gonna, right there, we're gonna make that street a boulevard right away back. Yeah, so that's why it got all messed up. Okay. Uh, any other questions for Mike? Hearing none? Go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. Move to refer the matter of a partial abandonment of the Grove Hill right of way to a public hearing on June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen at seven PM in accordance with Section thirteen A forty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, moved?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Agenda item number ten is a request for a fee waiver for a Jim Day Memorial Tournament. John Zook is here to discuss the, or excuse me, I guess, no, that is for me. Um, I'm sorry, not John. I didn't, there's somebody fundraisers here, but, uh, we have a gentleman here to talk about the, uh, the Jim Day Memorial Tournament. Um, I believe we had, we had approved this previously and, um, there was a, a change in the amount of police protection that was required. Um, and, and so therefore was an increase in the amount that the requested to have waived.
Good evening. Mike Lukaszewski, one oh five Ellsworth Boulevard, Berlin, Connecticut. Uh, good evening, Mayor.
Hi, Mike.
Members and, uh, Berlin citizens. Just to remind you, on, uh, January, on January fourth of nineteen, requested a fee waiver...
Can you be on the mic, please? Yeah, they have this information.
Do you have it? It's the old one?
Yeah.
Okay. Requested a fee waiver for our Jim Day Tournament on January thirteenth, which was approved in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four dollars. During that period of time, there were some org changes within Berlin Wrestling and also the town and the building use form was not included with the fee waiver. So, the hours for the extra duty police presence was, um, more than the five hundred and twenty-four hours. It was actually two thousand sixty-five dollars, which was a three hundred percent increase over last year's cost for the same amount of wrestlers and public, which seemed to be a little odd. But I'm here tonight to request additional funds to cover the fee waiver due to our tournament, uh, not being able to revenue that amount of money to cover that police presence. The organization has been in business for over twenty years. I've been with the organization for five years, currently three years as the treasurer. Um, we filter young wrestlers through the program, through McGee Middle School and also Berlin High School. We're a Berlin-based program and we are a volunteer board, uh, like yourselves, in a less stressful environment than what I've seen today. Um, we are in a position to fund some of this cost, but we, we cannot fund the entirety due to the, uh, the amount that we revenue. We only have one tournament per year. So, we're respectively asking for whatever the town can offer us to cover the additional cost, which would be fifteen, forty-one, fifty. Any of that amount would help us tremendously.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, okay. What do we, uh, any questions? Comments from Mike?
The only thing I can say considering, um, the contributions Jim Day made and I think we should fund the entire thing.
If, if I may, Christie Sullivan has done a lot of work going back and forth with, with the tournament, um, coordinators. It, it wasn't, it was just, it was an honest mistake, um, as they said. And there's been some change with the police about the number of police protection that was needed there. This was an unanticipated cost for the tournament and, I mean, I would recommend that, that you, that you grant the fee waiver for them. They do provide a, a feeder's program for the wrestlers in town. I believe my, all the input that I've gotten from everybody, this is a very good program.
I don't have a problem waiving this. Um, I've looked at the beginning of our agenda. We had nineteen items. There were many, many waivers of other fees for other civic organizations and groups like this. So, um, I'm keeping in good faith of some of the other things that we do. Um, I'd be in favor of this.
Likewise.
I'm, I'm gonna support this. I think it's a great organization, but in the future, would it be possible to use some of our new security officers for some of these items to save some money?
This is at the, uh...
At the school?
This is at the school, right, Mike?
At the Berlin High School, correct.
High School, right? Yeah, I mean, it's something, uh...
To look at.
It's something to look at perhaps, might be a little bit less, uh, funding in the future once we get them hired, you know, for other, next year, not, not now, but...
Absolutely.
We'll look at that to...
How many days? It was one event, just, uh, one day?
It was one event, one day, um, in eight hour period.
And it was two officers or...
It ended up being four officers. Normally, normally would be two officers for an event that size. There, there, again, there was some miscommunication. Um, there was an issue securing the gym. So, we, we actually didn't get this gym secured until a week prior to the tournament, which is usually done three months before the tournament. So, a week of trying to pull off a tournament like this was stressful enough. Uh, so, the building use form was not submitted with the initial paperwork to the town. Um, so, I think there were probably officers that just signed up and some paperwork got misplaced.
Four. Must be a rowdy crowd, you know? Gotta keep them under control, right?
Have you had any issues in the past?
We have not, not with our club, no. Um, and I do volunteer with Berlin baseball. I haven't had any issues with that either.
Wrestlers are tough guys.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's a great tournament, Jim Gay, Jim Day. Obviously did some great things for Berlin sports, so, yeah, I understand it was a mistake. So, um, appreciate you coming back to us, so, um, take a motion on this.
Okay. Move to approve the request of the Minutemen Youth Wrestling Club to waive all additional fees associated with having a Berlin police officer at Berlin High School for eight hours, seven AM to three PM on Sunday, January thirteenth, two thousand nineteen during their annual Minutemen Jim Day Memorial Tournament. The amount, or the total amount of the additional fee to be waived is approximately fifteen hundred and forty-two dollars.
Second.
Any further, um, questions or comments? Hearing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Good luck at the tournament.
Okay. Agenda item number eleven...
Oh, did it? That's right, did, huh? That's what we're late.
Um, is, is, we put this on the agenda because of the, uh, results of the referendum. We wanted to give the town council an opportunity to discuss the results and to discuss, uh, the, the budget, the upcoming budget.
Okay. What do you guys wanna discuss?
What was the percentage that voted last year? Do you remember? It's higher this year than last year, right?
It was, yeah.
A little bit higher, yeah.
Seventeen percent. I think it was like, what, ten percent last year or something?
Uh, one was, might have been twelve.
I thought it was thirteen last year.
Yeah. The second one was a little bit higher.
More people coming out, it's a good thing, if I might?
Hmm. That's good. Um, I mean, unfortunately, there's, uh, the first vote right on the town budget. Um, too high, too low, so, too high on the town budget. Um, that's difficult. We did reduce it further before it went to referendum. So, I, obviously, we'll have to look at that. Of course, it goes to the Board of Finance first, so we haven't received their budget yet to see what they might do. And the second one is the Board of Ed. By, uh, what do we got? Thirteen votes? Too low. Apparently, kinda right down the middle with that one. Um, again, whatever we wanna do, certainly as you know, in the budget process, the town council cannot add anything in per charter. So, what we would have to wait for, certainly if we were to add any money, any funding to the school or, or the town, uh, again, the town appears to be, we need to reduce it if we look at the votes, but it has to go to the Board of Finance. They will, um, vote on what they're gonna do and, of course, then it'll come back to us. Um, I think then we have five days to decide before we vote on it and it goes to the second referendum. So, um, yeah, I don't know. We can discuss it tonight, but I don't, you know, without seeing what the Board of Finance is gonna do.
I do have a quick question.
Sure.
That I wanted to ask.
Sure.
Um, I know, Alex, you, it was, I think you on the robo-call that went out prior to the budget?
Me?
Yeah.
I was on a robo-call this year?
Oh, there was, I, there was a robo-call that went out, but I don't...
Really?
Yeah.
No idea. I didn't get one.
I didn't know that either.
Neither.
Yeah. It was to, it was obviously that the budget was too high and I was just curious why the call went out when budget was set by the majority, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
As far as I know, there was no robo-call that went out, so I don't know what call you got, but, I, I mean, I'll check, but we, the majority, as far as I know of our party, did no robo-call, so, which for that very reason that we sent the budget forward with, with what we thought was a good budget. Um, so I...
I was on a robo-call last year.
That's right, last year.
But I wasn't.
Would they have done the same one again?
I don't...
Ask me.
Nobody said anything.
Huh?
He said, "I never heard anything either."
I don't believe, I, no. We, we didn't. I, I mean, as far as I know, we didn't, no. Yeah.
You didn't robo-call me.
No, me, me neither. So, we did, we did get them last year.
Robo-call.
I, I don't...
We ever lie it?
I don't know. Yeah, I get, yeah, I mean, we'll ask. I'll, I'll ask, but we, we didn't do anything, so, as far as I know. We can find out, but no one, no one else said anything to me about robo-calls in town or anywhere, so, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
But, but I agree, you know, our budget, we sent it forward, that's, that's what we believed to be the right budget. Apparently, most voters thought it was too high on the town side. So, I, I, you know, we took, and I think, uh, the Board of Finance, I forget what, I mean, there was many, as you know, many reductions through the, through the budget process, through the town manager's office, through the Board of Finance, and then ultimately to the council. I think our reduction to the town side of the budget was another eight hundred thousand dollars, which we sent forward. So, it's still too high according to these voters, if you look at the numbers. So, I guess we'd have to revisit that based upon some of their input. And again, the Board of Ed is the Board of Ed, I mean, thirteen vote difference, um... Half happy, half unhappy, so, um, another difficult issue. We have to certainly look at what they told us, but we, if we were inclined to add some in based upon the thirteen votes, we can't add anything in. We have to see what the Board of Finance sends us. We have no authority to add anything to the budget at this point, per charter. So, we'll have to wait.
It was, it was thirteen votes, but...
Right.
We did have an increase, like I said, in voter turnout over the last year.
Sure.
And, um, you know, no matter the vote spread.
Right.
It was, uh... It was, you know, something that prevailed, so...
Yeah, I mean, there are advisory questions, they're non-binding, but I agree, there's thirteen votes. That is, again, in the charter, that's not from me, that's how we wrote the charter when it was revised, but, again, if we, we could certainly have a discussion on what you want to do, we just couldn't take any action if we wanted to, let's say, to increase the Board of Ed budget, because we can't do that, so, um... Yeah?
Said there was a Board of Finance meeting Thursday, was that seven o'clock?
I think that...
Seven o'clock.
I don't, I don't think that's a...
One o'clock, what, seven o'clock?
I don't think that's a meeting, I think that's just a discussion.
So, we know if they're gonna vote that day, I'm just looking for dates of when we're gonna have to meet.
I think their meeting is Monday.
Monday?
For the vote.
Kevin Delaney's here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Kevin, come on up. Pretty sure it's Monday is the Board of Finance, and then it comes to us, and we have five days, as far as I know. Once they vote.
Tomorrow night is just a public hearing.
Thursday, alright.
Uh, Thursday, sorry, yes, Thursday night is a public hearing at the high school in the library room, um...
That's not an official meeting, is that for the, the whole, 'cause I know some Board of Finance members weren't even aware of it, which was, I found interesting, but...
Yeah, they, well, they've received the agenda, it's an official...
Being transparent.
Special Board of Finance meeting that night.
So, all members received the agenda?
Did they?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, so they all know then.
Huh, that's not what I heard this afternoon by one, so that's interesting, we'll have to, we'll have to check on that, 'cause that's not very transparent.
They checked their town email, then.
I believe it was, yeah, alright, that's good, I'm glad they did, maybe they didn't check.
Yep. Everybody received it, and it's been posted on the website as well and noticed for...
Okay, so you noticed it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Good.
And then, the plan is, right now, they'll have their regular meeting on Tuesday, the fourteenth.
On Tuesday.
And it is on the agenda to vote that evening. That is, is this day ten after the, um, after the election, or after the, sorry, the referendum? And, uh, that's by charter, the maximum they're allowed, so they've chosen to use all ten days.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock. Actually, both of them are seven o'clock.
The fourteenth is just downstairs here, right?
Down in the document.
Meeting room, yeah, okay.
And that'll be a regular meeting, there'll be, you know, transfers and some other regular items on the agenda. And then, at the very end, the request was to put that as the last item on the agenda, so they have an opportunity to discuss as long as they want.
Okay. So, what do you guys want to talk about?
We need to have till the twenty-first.
So, I have one question, Jeff, um, I don't have the charter with me, and the advisory questions, are they non-binding according to charter?
Yes.
They are? Okay, thank you.
Pursuant to a statutory amendment a few years ago.
Thank you.
What else do you want to talk about? Smile for the camera.
We have five days, right?
We have five days once we get it.
You get the budget from there.
Okay. That's what I thought, I'm just looking for the date. Make sure I'm here.
What are we thinking? Town, town budget, that, that's a difficult one, I don't, I mean... I don't, I don't even know, from our discussions, when we did reduce it a little bit further, um... I don't, I don't know where else we would go. I suppose we will revisit it, because obviously, if we're giving the voters credit, we see what they, uh, what they asked for, so... I guess we should listen to their advice, if we're gonna listen on one question, I guess we have to listen on both questions, right? So, it was pretty overwhelming on the town side that they thought it was too high. Much more than thirteen votes, what do we got, four, five hundred votes or something, I don't know. So, I guess in, in this meantime, maybe we should, uh... Mr. Healy and Mr. Delaney, um... Kevin? That's right. I know we've asked you before, but just, with, with the vote, uh... Just whatever else we can look at on the town side, I know we've done an exhaustive look, um, but again, trying to give the voters their due credit, which we should do, um, on both questions. I, I, you know, I don't, I don't know where else we would reduce based upon our budget that we sent forward. We thought it was, uh, about the most fair budget we could come up with for, for everyone in town, seniors, schools, projects, you know, we, we, we did the best we could, and then we thought it was pretty fair. So, I would just ask you, not tonight, but as we go forward, we have, we have a week, or actually, more, a little bit more than a week, to, before we get it, and we could see what the Board of Finance does with it, and see what, um, what we can do.
And if there's any good news from Hartford, any increases and any kind of other funding that we don't know about.
I thought I was reading something about, um, having an increase.
They did. So, what, what was good was the ECS grant was, uh, um, a little bit higher amount, it was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, I believe, that they're gonna get extra, and I, in a discussion with, uh, Mr. Bindi the other day, I said, "Yeah, of course, that's your money, that's, so that's, uh, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which will be a plus-up for them," so that's, that's great. So, that should help them out, uh, a little bit as well, so...
So, uh, I'm inclined to listen to the voters. On the town side, I gotta be honest, I don't know how much there is to cut, it's pretty lean. Um, so, you know, we have to listen to the voters when they say cut, I just don't know how, how much we're gonna cut, I, it's a, it's a tough one. And with the Board of Ed, it came back as a plus, so, you know, we can't add in, but we'll look at what the Board of Finance says, and, uh, you know, thirteen has to account for something, to have a, a value, and I think it's a plus value, so, um, I guess we'll take it from, uh, based on what the Board of Finance gives us.
Mayor Maybick, one comment?
Yeah.
Just from what was discussed before, I, I just want to make sure everybody understands, the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand is what was brought forward by the Appropriations Committee. It is not...
Approved.
In the budget, it's not approved, um, it's more than the governor proposed. There's a number of things that are gonna happen over the next thirty, hopefully thirty days, by June fifth, or potentially longer. It is good news, it's a good indication, and clearly, not just Berlin, but across the state, the legislature has a desire to put more money into ECS than was originally proposed, but it is not adopted, it's not, Berlin doesn't have that money.
Understood.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, we understand that, yeah. Uh, at least it's a positive step, hopefully. Okay, what else? What else you guys think? Anything else?
Guess we'll see what happens on Thursday, or next Tuesday.
Yeah, so, uh...
Next Tuesday.
Just wait.
When is our next meeting, after that? So, if they, whatever they say on the fourteenth, then, don't we have like five days after that?
Yep.
Five business days, so it would be the, our meeting...
Meeting on the twenty-first.
Or we can have, I, maybe we have a, maybe we'll schedule a special meeting ne- next week, just so we have two shots at it if we need it. We don't have to do it, but since, since our town council meeting would be the last time we would get to, to vote, um, on it, to look at it, uh, if we do maybe a special meeting next week, if, is there a day? If, if we need it, you know, we, we could always cancel that, or rather, we schedule it if we need it, um... So, Tuesday, so we'd get it, you know, Tuesday night, Wednesday? What do we, what do we want to do? Thursday? Does that work for people?
Sure.
Yeah.
No.
No?
It's my mom's eighty-eighth birthday.
Oh, well, you, I wouldn't, I wouldn't miss that, no?
She's gotta be there for that.
Oh, absolutely, um...
I could do Tuesday, but not Thursday.
About Wednesday?
Can't do Wednesday.
We won't have a Tuesday, totally.
Wednesday.
No, we can do Wednesday.
How long do we anticipate their meeting going on Tuesday? If it's at seven, I mean, we can make the meeting here at...
For hours, we're down.
Yeah, I just, wait for that. Um, we want to try Monday night, just, just so we have two shots at it, if we need it, we may not need it. I mean, we can certainly handle it at our council meeting if we think that's okay, but I'd rather we schedule a meeting just in case we want, uh, another one.
This is a placeholder, not an actual meeting right now.
Be a special meeting scheduled, but we could always cancel it, yeah, if, you know, or, or, which gives us just an extra night to discuss it, and we would make the final decision on, at our council meeting on Tuesday. Otherwise, Tuesday would be the one and only day, which, again, if that's, you guys think that's all we need, I, I just would rather just have another one scheduled for, for Monday night. Can you do Monday night?
Are you talking about the twentieth?
It'd be the...
Yeah, what?
Yeah, it'd be the twentieth, right. That's our next, 'cause it's, right, it's five days from, uh, the fourteenth, right, when they're gonna decide?
I just wanted to make sure I got the right one day.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. How do we look on Monday night? Oh, you can't do it, alright, so, I forgot, Monday nights are bad for you. Uh, okay, well, Saturday night, Sunday night, Friday night, I don't know, no, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you.
We'll just have on the council meeting.
You want to just stick with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'll be fine.
Alright, well, that's what we'll do, that's the consensus, we'll stick with our council meeting. It'll be the twenty-first, it'll be, we'll have that on the agenda, we'll make a decision and send it to the second, second referendum.
That's enough time to get it to the second referendum?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
That's the fifth day, right?
So, you're aware absentee ballots start going out on May ninth?
So, okay. Oh, so they wouldn't have a, uh, they wouldn't know, but they won't even, well, they won't even know from the...
How would they know?
Board of Finance either, Board of Finance doesn't even, hasn't even made a decision.
Getting into this last year, too.
That happened last year?
Yeah.
'Cause they're taking the full ten days?
It's not so much that...
It's the timeframe.
It's the timeframe.
With, when you gotta get the absentee ballots out.
Right. It's so tight.
So, last year was the same problem?
Yes. We start issuing ABs nineteen days before the referendum.
Ah, okay.
It's my understanding we had a lot of absentee ballots go out this year?
We did, but you know, Joanne, one of the, they were higher than they were last year, you're totally right. The other thing is, though, um, we have now permanent absentee balloting, which is a great, um, avenue for people who are physically disabled, that they can, give me a doctor's note, and they're automatically on the list to get an AB. So, it was used last year, but also, um, after the election, we sent out, I sent out letters encouraging people to sign up for it. So, we have about forty-three people, I think, at this point, so that's automatic forty-three ballots going out. But they go out for all the elections, you know?
Do you generally get them all back?
Um, there's a percentage, we get less back for like the referendum than we do for, um, the elections.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you know how many we got back this time?
I don't know, I can look at that.
Sixty-nine, I think?
Yeah, but they weren't all permanent absentee balloting, they were also a number that were regular, um, requests.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so, uh, okay, so that's, uh, no action on that item? Wait, see what happens? Alright, so we have appointments now? There's only one, if I, alright.
It's just a reappointment for, um...
A reappointment, okay.
Be number two.
So, we'll, uh, take a nomination?
I will make a motion to nominate, uh, Lisa Pianessa to the Central Connecticut Regional Health District.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, so welcome her back to our, um... CHD.
One more.
And is there another one?
No.
No, that's it, right? We still have a couple, right, on planning and zoning open, don't we? Have you checked, wasn't there two alternates?
Alternates.
We, we had two applications, right?
Alternates left.
Filled out applications, I think, two of them?
Thought they were all taken care of, but I can check to see if there's...
I think there was a question on, uh, the two people that were, that had filled out applications, I wasn't sure, um... I can't remember what happened the last time we...
I can check into it.
Yeah, check in.
I can send them to you and...
Yeah, send me who it was, I thought we had a question. And do we, we have any other applications that we haven't acted on, on the other, uh...
Not that I know of.
Okay. Alright, so, town manager report, Jack?
Okay. Left you a copy of the town manager report, I also left you a copy of, uh, Economic Development Commission Report by Chris Edge. He asked if I would distribute that tonight, so I did give you that on your desk. Just briefly, in the town manager report, um, the Burnham Street, I think you all are aware, the Burnham Street Bridge is closed, and will remain so until October, um, and to my knowledge, everything is going well so far, we haven't had any unusual events, but it's going, it seems to be going okay. Second thing is the, uh, I had, I went to the Conservation Commission to talk about the, the proposed lease, leash ordinance. We talked about whether or not they would like to have an area in one of the town parks where dogs would run unleashed. They are considering that information, and they will be taking that up at their next meeting, I believe their next meeting is next Tuesday. So, I'll be going to that meeting to discuss that with them. The purchase-sale agreement for Newport Realty is, is drafted and is waiting for signature, we'll be talking, uh, we have, you know, we want to do our due diligence, um, we're completing that, and, and once we're set, we'll, we will finalize that agreement. The contract for the senior community center grant has been signed and returned. Mike Ahern is working with the Public Building Commission, and he has drafted a, an RFQ for a consultant to begin the engineering study for, for that work. This one's of, of good interest to me, I've, I've been waiting, wanted to see this happen. The work on the Kensington Dam is scheduled to begin on May twenty-second, I was talking to, May twentieth? It's changed, uh, May twentieth, and, uh, I believe that Mike, you, you had said that they're going to send letters out to all the abutting property owners, let them know that they, we're gonna start to draw the water down in, in that, in that dam, and that will be continuing on until probably January of, uh, next year. This one, this one is interesting, um, during the budget referendum, I'm not sure if you were aware of this, uh, the voting at the senior center was briefly disrupted, due to a gas odor. No one was prevented from voting, but due to the occurrence, the registrars of voters and the town staff met today, and they're working on preparing a contingency plan in case a similar event was to occur in the future. The discussion today centered on, in the future, if something was that, like that was to occur, you know, if it was occurred during a major election, we wouldn't be able to have handled it up there, uh, they will, they will, they will move the voting down to the community center. We talked about how that would take place today, uh, so there's a group in Kate's working, is on that group with us, to, to look at how we could have a contingency plan i- in that event. Just a reminder, and I think you just, you've gone over, the Board of Finance will hold a public meeting on Thursday, May ninth, at seven o'clock at the Berlin High School library room, it's in the library room, just want to point that out, um, for residents to comment on the budget. So, uh, and that is posted on the town website.
Good.
A public information meeting was held on April twenty-fifth for the Four Bridge Federal Bridge Preservation Project. Mike, uh, attended representing the town, there were, there were two town residents who came, uh, from Wildemere and from Dunham Drive. The four bridges involved the Berlin Street Bridge, uh, the Heritage Drive, Wildemere Road, and Worthington Road, and I believe it was a, it was just a good conversation, but everything is still proceeding very well on there. Okay. It's interesting that it's, it's Nurses' Day, I, I view this as being, uh, an upbeat rapport, I, uh, I'll start with, let me start with the last part of it. The VNA, as you know, we, we've talked back and forth about what, how much money they lose and don't lose, and, and where they're going. Right now, they currently, for this year, have lost five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's the downside. The good, the upside is, they have made significant improvement, I, what I think is significant improvement. The revenue is up a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars thus far this year, that's for the good. Their expenses have also dropped twelve thousand dollars this year, so they have improved their financial position this year thus far by a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. I think that's, we, you, I know in our conversations, we want to see improvement, I think that the, that the management team there and, and the VNA, having a VNA board again has improved their position, and I think that you're gonna continue to see positive, uh, uh, results from, from them. I know it's not breaking even yet, but I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction. I'd like to issue congratulations to the library, uh, they were notified recently that they were awarded the Community Foundation Grant to fund a social worker. They're very excited about that, I think this is a very good program, and I commend Helen for soliciting the grant and being able to do that, provide more services at our library for, uh, the people who use it. Uh, the contract for resurfacing the Skol East Field has been awarded, shop drawings are in the process of being prepared, so that project is moving right along. The last one, um, we've had several things recently come up, and I, I had talked to our, the town attorney, I thought we should just, just briefly make you aware, there are several legal matters that are taking, that are occurring in, in the town. Uh, the first one is, you know, the town has entered into mediation with the Farmington Avenue Bridge Contractor, Mastro Batisto. The second thing is, the town has also entered into a mediation with the school project contractor, Ferguson Contractors. A, the third thing is, um, several of us in the staff will be giving depositions next week in the Helen Rigan Civil Case. Uh, the fourth is, the town has been issued a civil summons, uh, Rocky Realtor, Rocky River Realty Company Tax Appeal for one oh seven Selden Street. Jeff is, is representing us on that. Uh, the town has been issued a civil sum, summons for Casaboll versus the town of Berlin, and then P, this is an appeal of the animal restraint order issued by the Animal Control Officer. And the last is, the town has been issued a civil summons for Brockel versus Reddick, uh, Board of Ed, Town of Berlin, and the VNA. And I just wanted to make you aware of those, I think, to talk to Jeff, if you need, if you were to request any further information, he would have to give that to you.
Right, if you want to have an executive session at next meeting or some future meeting to get details on any of these, just tell somebody and we'll do it.
Yeah, let's do it. Cause some, I'd even, there's a couple I didn't even know.
I think we just should.
Yeah, I know, it's just, yeah, just...
Give us a thumbnail sketch of what's going on.
Yeah, just a sketch on all, I mean, some know about, some we've talked about, some, a couple we haven't, obviously.
You want to put that on the agenda in two weeks?
Next, uh...
Sure.
Twenty-first, yeah.
Were you able to find out what the gas odor was at the senior center?
Jim, did they ever deter, my understanding is they think it's just a...
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Special committee reports? I don't think we've had any, right?
No, the Fields Committee's gonna meet Thursday at six fifteen, right, Charlie?
Right. What's going on with our Orders Committee and our sign regulations?
Um...
Signs keep popping up when they're discussed.
Yeah, that's...
Like to have a nice, simple, clear-cut ordinance.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we're, we're working on that, so, the Orders Committee, I know you're waiting on, uh, Grounds Committee or, or the, um, Wetlands Commission for...
Wetlands, the Conservation.
Conservation for...
For a dog.
Dog.
Yeah.
Issue. So, when, when is it, when'd you say the meeting?
Next Tuesday, that meeting's next Tuesday.
Okay, so maybe after next Tuesday, we can have ordinance?
We could, I was gonna see how that, I, I was thinking about scheduling an ordinance committee meeting, and I held off doing that. I'm assuming they're going to make a decision that night, if they were, I'd like to have an ordinance commission, committee meeting prior to your meeting on the twenty-first.
Oh.
Which would only be like Wednesday or Thursday. I mean, it could have, it could be after the twenty-first, I was just trying to, so we could put it on the agenda and, and have these...
We could look at the leash and the sign ordinance.
Yes.
And the tax plan for the seniors, which I think we have a, talking to some people around town about it, a lot of people like the credit that we were talking about.
They like it better than, than the other.
Yeah, it just seems to, it seems like it'd be easier to administrate, too, right, and, and it would be, uh, obviously, an amount every year, um, whatever amount we agreed to.
I don't know, if you are available next Thursday, we could, I could schedule a meeting next Thursday and, uh, for the Orders Committee.
Thursday? Yes? Brenda?
I'm good Thursday.
Thursday?
Wednesday.
This is the sixteenth, some others...
Not Wednesday.
Is that good for you? Okay. Well, you're, you're not, you're not in an ordinance, okay. So, you're, you're good, Joanne, and, and hopefully Peter's, uh...
I can, I can email Peter, or, I can even text Peter, he's, he answers his...
So, let's do, yeah, let's do it, um...
Okay.
So, we can move some of those things forward, hopefully, if the... hopefully if the...
Be sixteen.
Five sixteen.
You want it for seven there?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we could.
What time?
Seven? Okay, so that's, uh, that's good. All right, so, uh, Council Communications. Anybody, what do we have?
I have some, uh, questions.
Sure.
Jack, um, if we go back to your report, I, I know I did send, uh, an email to you earlier today, but, um, it is good news about the VNA, totally good news. However, the bad news is, their census is still at sixty, and they really have to move that forward. I mean, we have, what, six weeks until the, or, end of the fiscal year? They, they should be at eighty, they really need to move that, because if they don't, they're never gonna break even, they have to keep moving that census up, and it hasn't moved, so...
I think it's been sixty-four, sixty, sixty-four.
That's what I mean, it's been the same, and you're never gonna get better, um, break even if we don't move that number forward.
I agree, I think they, I mean, they all, we all agree on that, and that was one of the reasons they've gone and, and, again, expanded it, it's American.
Yeah, I, I did hear that. The other thing, too, that we probably should have, because it could really impact them next year, is, um, they should probably come to a council meeting and speak about the changes next year, the grouper model, so, and where they are in terms of, um...
Grouper?
Preparation for it. Grouper.
Like that, the next council meeting?
It doesn't have to be the next one, it could be in July, um, but, you know, the more that we are assured of where they are in their planning, and, and I know our chairman of the board is here tonight, so you can bring it up at your next meeting, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Um, how, how, how do they increase that census? What do they have to do?
Get more patience.
No, I know that, but how, how do they do that?
Well, I had encouraged them to get a marketing individual, but I know that Wendy and, what's her other, what's their, her...
Jennifer.
Jennifer have been making visits to places, so they just need to get on the pavement, get out there and get more, more business.
Got it, yep. And they know that, obviously, I'm sure, right? Okay, good.
Just for the council information, I attended that information system on the bridge program, and, um, I don't know what town staff person initiated it, but I think it's a great idea, it's a great asset, it's a proactive, uh, attack on our bridges before they become so bad they have to be replaced. It's a maintenance program, and eighty percent is funded by the federal government, so it's, it's a great way to save the town money and improve the bridges. It's nice to see a proactive maintenance instead of a disaster situation.
And the best part is, the federal government picks up eighty percent of the cost, is that what it is? Even better.
And the idea is that you fit, you work on a bridge, meaning it costs you two-hundred-thousand dollars, not two million dollars, that's the object.
Right, before it's too bad.
Yeah, you see, what you're doing is, you're, you're preventing, you're preventing all the damage to the superstructure, you, uh, it's preventive maintenance, it's something that, you know, manufacturing does all the time, and it, it, instead of waiting till the, the bridge is to the point where it has to be replaced, which is costing more money, it's inconvenient, you know, right now, I haven't, I, I'm sure all of you have had, maybe not, but may, probably have got a call about Burnham Street, it's, it's, I know every day I forget, and I come that way, and I have to remember I have to go swing around.
Turn around all the time, it happens to me at least once a week.
You know, it, it's inconvenient, and, again, we, there are several bridges beside those, I mean, those four are, are gonna just get maintenance, but we have several bridges right now that are stacked up, um, to, to do work on, which are gonna be as inconvenient or more inconvenient in the future. At some point, the Kensington, the bridge on Kensington Road is gonna have to be done, it's the five-pipe culvert by the post office, the bottoms of those pipes have, uh, have rusted out. I think, Mike, you just got another, a report for another bridge where there's, at the water pipe interface, there's, the pipe is rusted out, and so, a lot of these were built right after the fifty-five flood, and they were put in with these galvanized pipes, and it's, it's, they're all come and do, and they're all coming at the same time, so you're gonna have several of these stacked up over the next few years.
It's really good to see this proactive, on the ones we can fix like this, so I applaud our engineering department for that, thank you.
Well, I'm good. So, just a couple things, uh, you know, obviously, I hope you read the Chris Edge report there of all the very, very positive things going on economically in Berlin, um, you know, some great developments coming, obviously, the biggest one is the TOD downtown, which hopefully will be very fruitful. It's great that we were able to bring that forward in the last couple of years, we have, uh, with the change in the zoning, um, zone on the Berlin Turnpike, we have another developer that's excited to get started, that's the property, that's, uh, um, south of, uh, the Blue Lobster there, there's a piece of property there that's been, uh, undeveloped for many years, so he's got a project there for some housing units and some commercial development. Uh, the Accra dealership, the building next door, um, and Mr. Orencini, who, uh, is, has owned some other property, a, a little bit north of that, that building where there's a beauty salon, and he's still got a couple vacancies there, behind Berlin Pizza, basically. Uh, he's got a, he's looking at a plan now that the, the zone was changed on, on the Berlin Turnpike for some more housing units and some more retail and commercial. So, there's a lot of great things that have been happening in Berlin, we've, we've added, you know, a lot to the grand list, remember when we add some of these things to the grand list, though, if it's new development, most of the developers are asking for a tax abatement, which every town pretty much gives out if we wanna attract business to Berlin, we have to, we have to do that, and we have, I think we just recently changed our tax abatement program, uh, made it a little bit more attractive for some of these developers to bring them to town, and we have been bringing them to town, so, that's some positive. And on a negative note, I just happened to see this letter in my file, so I'll just share it with everybody, so I guess, you know, we know about the teacher pension costs, I think this year we're, we're kicking in, what, one, for the teacher pension this year? One-thirty-something, what do we pay? One-thirty-four. So, if we go forward, according to this letter from the Connecticut Education Association, uh, the projected cut for Berlin moving forward would be in FY twenty would be five-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, right, that's on, that, those are on the town, right? Those are town figures that we'd have to pay? If, and how they settle, the next year, nine forty-one, and the two-year combined cut would be one-point-four million, if, if the legislature pushes some more of the contributions of the Teacher Retirement Fund to the town, so, we'd be out in a couple of years, one-point-four million, so, uh, that will wreak havoc with our budget, one-point-four million is a large amount, so that's just some things coming us from our state legislature, more, uh, expenses being pushed to the towns, um, so, you know, just be aware of that and, give Hartford your opinions on things like that, because we're all, the towns are gonna pay for it, and there's only one place we have to pay for it, and that's raise our property tax, and, you know, we can bring in economic development, and that will help, but I, most of our taxes come from our real estate, so... Okay, so where are we at? We have one, uh, we're done with that, acceptance of minutes, April sixteenth. Motion on that?
Okay, motion, ex, motion to accept the town council meetings from, meeting minutes from April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. And now we'll mo, move to go into, motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session for real estate Connecticut...
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. We need to add something to executive session, so in addition to, um, Berlin Turnpike, we need to add Farmington Avenue, so first of all, we need to have a motion to add Farmington Avenue to the executive session.
And before, and just before we do that, I'm sorry, just, just back to comments, so, obviously, Mr. Healy, uh, will be leaving us, and we, you know, talk some more about that, but I just wanted to say that Denise Parsons couldn't make it tonight, but we've been, I've been talking with her, uh, and, you know, we're, we're trying to, um, come up with a, with a plan, and one of the things she told me was CCM, Connecticut Conference on Municipalities that we're part of, they actually have a, a search arm, which I, I don't, I don't know if it's new, I don't, I don't think we're aware of it, she did some research on it, and, uh, you know, if, when we get to that point, which I'm sure we will,